That little tweet.
Sis, only get to do it twice tonight.
We're not messing around tonight.
This is a call to order of the Sparks Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, June 16th, 2016. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Camerota.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Hewens, absent. Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Spurber.
Here.
Commissioner Vanderwell.
Here.
Commissioner Bowles, absent. Assistant City Attorney, Doug Thornley.
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Development, Armando Pernau.
Here.
All right. This is an opportunity to have public comment and a reminder there will be no public comment later as the items on the agenda are general business items only. This item for public comment is either for public comment on any action item or for general public comment and is limited to no more than three minutes for each commentator. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll close that. We'll seek approval of the agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. Approval of the minutes?
Doug, Mr. Chairman, I had a question. I don't know whether it's in regards to...it would be on page six of the minutes, line 14, where it has an answer, Commissioner White. I don't know if that should be stricken or...there was no...I mean, not even anybody on the planning commission has a last name close to White.
Would you clarify that, Mr. Lee? You mean page six of the video...
Yeah, of the court report. Yes, yeah. Page six, line 14.
The deposition. Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Does anybody remember who it was?
Let me see. We need a motion.
Is it during the test line?
Well, no, it was during the...during the motion phase.
I...I don't know. I asked a question before that, but I don't remember saying we need to withdraw the motion.
I wonder if that was true.
You know, probably would be.
No, she's on seven.
So... Obviously, I didn't do it because I was right after.
So, if we don't remember, let's not...let's not do anything. Make a note of it. Why don't we just push the minutes of this meeting to the next one while somebody watch...watch the video and figure out who it is?
While we're on it, I got a couple of comments on the...
Oh, you do? Okay.
One is...just a comment I'd like to make. It doesn't really matter. It doesn't really have to be reflected, and that is my name was misspelled the first two times it was printed on this minute. There it was corrected and throughout the rest of the minutes it was spelled correctly. It doesn't matter, except I don't think we ought to have two Peterson commissioners on here.
Sure.
My mother always told me one was enough. The other thing that I'd like to make a comment, and I'm very serious about this one because, and I think if it's reflected in these minutes, then I can be acceptable with it, but if you go to page 72... And line six, where it says, Commissioner Seeger, is, "Are you making that in a form of a motion?" That was my comment. Peterson made that comment. And second of all, then it goes on down to line 10 and says, Commissioner Seeger, "Second motion..." Commissioner Peterson's second motion. The reason I want that very clear in here is because I want all my colleagues that sit up here to know that I supported this 100 percent.
Okay.
So, just for clarification, then, can I just clarify?
Yes.
On line six, where it says Commissioner Spurber, that should say Commissioner Peterson.
Peterson. Correct.
And on line 10, also again, says Commissioner Spurber, that should say Commissioner Peterson.
Correct.
And then the misspellings.
The misspellings.
The first...the first two times it mentioned, roll call, I think, and then the other...and it's just it was spelled with an O N instead of an E N.
And then we need to figure out the mystery on line 14, page six. And then if you...merely when we...when we do that, if you just contact Sunshine and have him reprint it, please?
So, we will suspend approval of the minutes?
Let's just continue it to the next meeting.
Continue. Do we need a vote?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue the...the minutes until the next meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item six on the agenda, announcements and committee reports?
We have none. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Arnarls. And item seven, any additional items?
We do not have any informational items either.
Okay. Next item is public hearing items. There are no public hearing items. The next item is under...there are two items under...excuse me. Two items under general business, item number eight. Please come up, Ms. Melby.
Yeah.
Ms. Karen, I'm sorry.
I can't...
I'm lost in my notes.
My glasses on, so I have to...
I was so excited about your...
Welcome.
Who is the manager of development services.
Right.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Karen Melby, manager of development services. Before you tonight is a consideration and possible action on the final handbook to amend the Spanish Springs Town Center handbook to allow...to revise the standards which would allow a mini storage on a...and also the associated standards with that on a site that's 4.1...41.65 acres in the NUD district, and the address is 4988 Galleria. On the screen...Marilye? I look up and it's not there. Yeah. This is a vicinity map. The parcel that this amendment only affects is the one that's highlighted in cyan. The actual boundary of the planned development is this parcel and then also this area over here. So, it's two different separate sections. As you will remember, the planning commission reviewed this tentative handbook on April 21st of this year and recommended approval to city council with some changes or modifications. City council approved the plan...the tentative handbook on May 23rd, 2016 with these modifications. These modifications are reflected in the version that has been submitted to you today. Again, this is a final approval of the Spanish Springs Town Center Plan Development Handbook to add the mini warehouse use only on this parcel here, which is the cyan piece, which is known in the handbook as RCSO2. The proposed amendment does not affect the integrity of the approved commercial development plan. The final handbook includes all of the requirements in the tentative handbook for the construction of the mini warehouse project relative to the south property line, which you will remember it was the issue that was brought up for the modifications. Staff has reviewed the revised draft final handbook for the Spanish Springs Town Center and determines it's in substantial compliance with the tentatively approved handbook. It does not vary the proposed gross density or intensity of the Spanish Springs Town Center handbook, especially since there is no residential in this planned handbook. Again, it doesn't vary the ratio of residential to non-residential. It does not reduce the common open space areas. It could potentially increase the floor area proposed for non-residential uses from the approved tentative handbook, and it could increase the total ground area covered by building but will not substantially change the heights. It's the staff's opinion that the final draft of the Spanish Springs Town Center Plan Development Handbook complies with these five criteria as outlined in the NRS. Potentially, the construction of the mini warehouse project could increase the amount of non-residential floor area compared to a typical shopping center, but the impacts compared to a typical shopping center as a mini warehouse, staff feels that it would generate less traffic and there's no loading docks on the rear of the building which would affect the residential which is to the south here. Most likely, it...the house is to the south. The 20-foot setback from the rear property line addresses the issues raised by the neighboring single-family homes to the south. Staff recommends approval. That concludes my presentation.
Ms. Melby, is it...is it possible to refresh on what some of those comments were about the setbacks?
Yes. What they had proposed originally was they were going to put the prop...the building of the mini warehouse on the property line. It was going to be 16 feet tall, and what they worked out as a compromise with the neighborhood was that it's going to be set back 20 feet from this property line here, be 20 feet back, and the maximum height along that south side would be 10 feet, and they'll have that landscape and it'll be fenced off so that it doesn't have access except by the maintenance people for the facility.
Thank you. Another item on your discussion of a substantial compliance. I noticed item eight talks about height of building, but in nowhere talks about the height of a wall. So, is that wall not an item of substantial compliance with regards to NRS 278A?
I would think actually, potentially, that an applicant probably can address this better, but I would guess that an actual...the mini warehouse structures may be actually lower in height than a typical shopping center building.
Shall we call you?
Sure.
Would the applicant like to come forward? Thank you, Ms. Melby.
Good evening. For the record, Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers. I have with me Eric Breyer, developer of the property, and Skylo Dangler, as well as Bill Flyner, the owner. You've seen this before. You approved it before, the tentative map. We made the arrangements with the homeowners to set the buildings back. The building heights are dictated in the handbook. We're not going to exceed those. We're going to be below those. City council approved it, so we're before you tonight with the...with the same handbook, asking for the final approval so we can move forward. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I move to forward a recommendation to the city council for final approval of the Spanish Springs Town Center Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 15066 and the facts supporting those findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item?
Next item on the agenda is item PCN 15058, consideration of and possible action on a request for final approval of the Golden Triangle Handbook, a planned development on a site 43.83 acres in size in a new urban development district, zoning district located at 6,000 Vista Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada. Ian Critten, senior planner, presenting.
Thank you, Commissioner Camerota. As you said, this is the final...request for final approval of the Plan Development Handbook for Golden Triangle. As you may remember, this is kind of a corner piece of the old northeast Gulf communities. I want to say northwest every time, but northeast Gulf communities, that handbook went away last year, and this piece was left over and is now in the NUD district but has no handbook. And so, this handbook is required as...in order for this to be developed in any way. You may also remember that this handbook was a little different. It was designed not with specific areas for each development type but as kind of a mixed-use district, which is what the mixed-use...the master plan land use for the...on the area is mixed use. And so, the...the use table allowed for single-family residential uses, multifamily residential uses, and commercial uses, but did not stipulate the...the mix of those uses. And so, those will be determined both by the market as well as by developer preference and so forth. Maxims for each of those different design types or different use types was set forth, but it'll be a mix of those to some degree or another as it develops. It will come in as a series of projects. Those projects will re-review through either the administrative review or conditional use permit process, depending on which uses those are, and will...will actually function a lot like what we refer to as straight zoning in...in the rest of the city, in the southern part of the city, I guess, that matter, and will still receive a high level of review. The...one of the big other pieces of this project is the traffic light that will be required on...right around the midpoint of this triangular piece that will be required at the time of the first development, you know, whenever that comes in, that will be part of that first development. And then updates to the traffic study will be needed for each project coming in relating to how it impacts the traffic and so forth. The handbook didn't change between the point at which planning commission had opportunity to review it for tentative approval, and now it's...it's still in substantial compliance. I wanted to look at those specifically.
Page five.
Yeah, as Karen went through them, the same applies here. Didn't vary the residential density because it's not specifically known, but...but the densities set forth in the land use table didn't change. The ratio of residential to non-residential again didn't change because it's not set in stone at this point. The amount of open space hasn't changed either. That's...that piece is fairly set in stone. There's a certain amount that is going to be set aside due to hillside and to open space requirements, and the rest of it will be accomplished through open space throughout the different projects. There's no increase in floor area. That's not really an issue in this case. And then there will be no increase in total ground areas covered by buildings and so forth. Those numbers are set forth in the handbook. There's no...there was no variation between the tentative version you saw and the final version before you. In staff's opinion, the draft or the...the final draft, the Golden Triangle Plan Development Handbook, does not substantially vary from the five criteria in its performance with the tentative handbook. Staff recommends approval. Available for any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Ian, I was going through this handbook, and somewhere in here I thought I'd seen that before Phase One starts or finishes that they have to put in a light?
Yeah. That's what I was mentioning. On Vista Boulevard, there will be a light that is required, and that's required with the first project that comes in, that...that light's going to be required.
Okay.
To be constructed and improved. And while we would allow them to initiate construction, nothing would be able to function before that light was approved and verified.
Page four.
Okay. And also, Ian, on the residential setbacks and density requirements?
Okay.
I'm on page 2-3 of the handbook. And it says minimum lot size, 2,000 square foot.
Okay.
That's for a single-family residential?
Yeah.
Minimum.
That's the minimum. Correct.
Okay. Is there a maximum that we know of?
No.
Okay. And also, on landscaping requirements, it says not applicable. Why not? It says number four, but it says 20 percent required for attached developments.
So, basically, in single-family residential, we don't have a required landscaping amount because, see, the family, you're required to have a front yard which you would landscape...
Well, that's what I was getting to.
Yeah. That...that volume, we don't typically stipulate in single-family residential. We don't stipulate an amount of landscaping like we would in multifamily or commercial where all of that open space is common property and that there's a landscaping requirement.
Didn't we, by the time, discuss it? Probably the first project to go out there will be residential.
There's been some discussion along those lines as residential, but none of that's stipulated. None of it's conditioned to be that way, but...but the way demand is right now, that's possible.
Mr. Critten, would you clarify as it relates to residential landscaping in the front yard? While there isn't a specified percentage of the...of the space that's required for landscaping, there is required to be some sort of ground cover or landscaping under the municipal code, isn't it right?
Correct. There is landscaping requirements along those lines, but it's not specific to volume. So, there are criteria that they'll have to meet for front yard landscaping.
And that would include the irrigation system?
Yeah.
Would it be stubbed off for the backyard? Or do you know?
That's...that's totally up to the developer and...and the property owner to determine what they want to do in their backyard.
Okay.
And even so, depending on what goes on in the front yard, it may not include irrigation?
Yeah, zirisking is potentially doesn't even...
If it is finished, I suppose my point as it relates to your question, Commissioner Lee, is...is the municipal code, under any circumstances, does not allow for bare dirt front yard. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Critten? Would the applicant like to come forward, please?
For the record, Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers, representing the applicant. You've seen this project before and approved it unanimously with the tentative handbook. It moved on to city council and they approved it unanimously, so we're before you tonight for the final. Nothing has changed, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
Thanks.
No questions? Thank you.
Sure. Can I make a motion?
No questions, anyone?
No. Okay. I move to forward a recommendation, city council, for final approval of the Golden Triangle Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 1505.
All in favor?
Second.
Excuse me.
Second. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I had to sneak that one in quick.
I know. It was good. Thanks, guys. As indicated earlier, this is not a public hearing, but we would like to invite anyone to come forward to make any public comment.
We have...we have updates.
Number...
Oh, excuse me.
Item...item 10. Item number 10, before we do that, is an update on a discussion of and possible direction to staff on a comprehensive plan for the city of Sparks. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. We wanted to give you a brief update on where we're at and what we are expecting, basically, of the planning commission. So, first of all, the survey results have been pretty good. We are...on the deep dive, which is the...the more in-depth survey question, the survey's process is essentially concluded at this point. We are working on balancing our race, trying to get some of the numbers to reflect what the population percentages are for the city of Sparks. So, we're working on that right now, but essentially, we've concluded the...the deep dive survey process, and we're in the process of still analyzing the results. We have to date, as of June 15th, 1,666 surveys. That is both the long and the short forms combined, which gives us a 239 percent of our goal, and a 99 percent confidence rating. It gives us a margin of error of 3.15, which is very low. Pretty...so, that gives us a pretty high confidence level. The...what I wanted to do tonight was briefly go over...we are in the process...we have started... The, what I wanted to do tonight was briefly go over, we are in the process, we have started writing the document, and we've created an outline. This is the, the outline for the document. The first chapter is what we're calling United Sparks. And in this chapter is why is there a comprehensive plan? Uh, a background on the City of Sparks' master plan in that we are, we, right now, our master plan is composed of as a big binder with a bunch of separate documents. And what we're trying to do with this comprehensive plan is combine those separate elements into one comprehensive plan. Um, also defining what the planning area, which is the City of Sparks plus the severe influence areas, and then also what's the goal of comprehensive plan. That's all in chapter one. The pathway to the future is what we're calling chapter two, and that includes the vision statements, the vision statement, and also what we're identifying as key challenges, and I will discuss those in a minute. The third chapter is what we're calling Sparks Today, and this includes, uh, Brief History of the City of Sparks, includes environmental and cultural resources, the population, a discussion on population right now, the housing, also land use pattern development for the City of Sparks, economic strengths, a discussion on our, the economic situation in the City of Sparks, and then the last section is the city's facilities and services. Chapter four is going to be actually the heart of the document or the meat of the document. That's called, what we're calling the framework of the future. And that's where we're going to discuss seven, the seven frameworks, but that's actually going to be where all the policies will be in this chapter. And I'll discuss what the seven poli- the frameworks or the seven frameworks will be in a minute. Um, the last chapter is going to be an implementation and success, measuring success, and that's going to be an Excel spreadsheet, which had to have each one of the po- goals and policies, and then we'll have columns of, is this a fiscal impact to the city, things like that. So, um, that will be the, the last section of the document. So based on, um, the community service, the community survey, we've identified, basically, what we're calling the key challenges of the document. The first one is growing while retaining our small-town character. Um, one of the things that came out in the survey was everybody was saying that they love the small-town feel. We want to keep the small-town community. Well, we're going to have to grow as a community, and it's inevitable that we grow. So it's going to be a critical thing that we're going to have to address. A key challenge is going to be allow the city to grow while we still keep that small-town feel. Um, another issue that came up a lot was traffic, and so we're calling that challenge is getting around. And, um, so we'll, that's a challenge of how to keep people moving within our city. The next challenge is maintaining the city's services and facilities or slash amenities. So we want to be able to keep up with the growth, but we also be able, you know, have to provide our services, and we have to establish policies on what kind of service levels we want, where we want to go with the service, that kind of issues. The next thing that, um, was identified as a key challenge is that with the service provisions of services and facilities, that has a, a cost to the city. And so we have to be able to look at sustaining our fiscal health of the city. So we have to balance providing these services, keeping up with the growth, but we also have to keep our budget healthy and the city functioning healthy. So that would be our next challenge. And then the, um, the last one would be meeting the needs of the community. So identifying what the community, um, more parks or maintain, maintaining the, the maintenance of the parks, some of the things that have been commented, maintenance of the streets, maintenance of the tra- timing of the traffic signals. That all goes into the needs of the community, but that's also has some fiscal impacts. So those are the challenges that we're facing. Reflected in the community's vision, um, and at the policy level, we've condensed these key challenges and, and the quality of life elements into seven topics. The first topic is what we're called growth management. And under this topic would be the land use development, addressing regional, um, the regional plan policies, listing our new land use categories, and I don't know if you're aware of this, but right now our land use map has seventy-six, if I remember the number right, it's seventy-six land use categories. And so we are in the process of reducing that down to a manageable size of sixteen. So that's one of the topics that I'll talk to you in a minute that we're going to be touching on. Um, and then all, this chapter would also have the goals and policies relating to land use management, growth management, annexation, and also, um, things like, uh, the, the regional plan. The next.
Can I interrupt?
Yeah.
On the annexation, is the, is the annexation that will be included in this, the annexation plan that, that we need to adopt?
No.
It's a separate document.
No, at this point, we're looking at one of the policies be, would be that we would adopt a, a, um, a land use plan, I mean, the annexation plan in the near future.
Right.
But we're establishing policies that would guide what kind of annexation, what, how we want to annex properties. Is what we're doing, the policies in this document would be that. And then the annexation plan would be the map of the areas that we, in prioritizing how we would adopt annexation areas.
Great.
But that will be a separate document.
Thank you for the clarification.
The next, um, framework topic would be connectivity, we're calling. And this topic would be, um, street network in our traffic system. It would be, address the, um, as you know it as the TUD, but we're going to be changing that to the MUD, Mixed Use District, because in the zoning document, and when we adopted the zone, the new zoning code in, um, August last year, we changed that name to Mixed Use Development as opposed to TOD, because a lot of people kept saying, well, we don't want transients in our neighborhood. So we changed, got rid of that misconception of trans- transient development and called it mixed use, because that's the intent of the district, is to make a walkable, mixed-use district. The next issue that we will address in this, this section is pedestrian trails, regional trails, also bike paths. And then again, th- this would address the policy and goals relating to those topics. Like complete streets, that's one of the topics that we're looking at, and we're de- working on a map right now, identifying and, and setting a, a tier of what type of, what type of complete street we want. The third topic is community facilities and services. And this would be generally all the services and facilities that the city would have. We would address water, sewer, reclamation, water reclamation, stormwater, all our city services, fire, police, municipal court, administrative stuff, community services. Um, also address fiscal health, parks and recreation, including the parks, the amenities, programs, the events. Uh, it would also possibly have some topics on services that we don't provide, like schools, libraries, some of the utilities that we don't provide, electrical, gas, telecommunications, solid waste, healthcare. Again, this chapter would conclude, or section would conclude with the goals and policies. The next section is community character. The topics under this one would be maintaining our small-town feel, uh, addressing the downtown. One of the things that came out in the, the survey was that people want a, what they're calling a vibrant downtown. And we, one of the questions in the survey, you'll remember, is where is the downtown? The majority of the people are identifying that downtown is the Victorian Square. So we're going to be working on policies to, um, enhance that or address that. The next topic would be the neighborhood character, built cap- environment and character, cultural resources, our historical sources, and then the, again, concluding with goals and policies. The next section would be housing and affordability, and this would be addressing affordable housing and workforce housing, and any other relation topics related to housing. Again, concluding with goals and policies. The next was resiliency and sustainability. And this to- this one would look at our water resources, um, address impacts on climate change, managing disaster and disrupt- disruptive, um, forms of change, and then also addressing technol- technological changes, concluding with goals and policies. And then the last policy framework is, um, economic vitality. This would be growing our economic base for the community. That's important to keep our community healthy and growing. And then also, um, desirable place to work and job. This would address, you know, like, jobs and events and tourism kind of things, concluding with goals and policies. The last thing that I wanted to go over with you tonight, we are on a critical path. And, um, the city manager has giving, given staff the direction that this ma- plan has to be adopted by city council in mo- October of this year. So if you go on the critical path, we have to go to regional planning, um, in September. So, um, we will have to bring the comprehensive plan for public hearing to you in August. So let me go through what the critical path is. We will be having workshops with you on the policy frameworks and the, the, all the policies. We'll be reviewing each policy, and what we're going to be doing is giving you a document that will have just the policies and not the associated text at this point, so you can focus on those policies. And what we'll do is, as staff promise that we will give you that a week before, as opposed to the typical, was it five days before the pl- the Planning Commission meeting? We will give you a minimum of a week before that document. And what we want is to have a workshop. We won't be doing this as a regular Planning Commission meeting, because what we want to do is have this meeting in the training room and then lay out the maps and lay out the policies, and we're still working on the format of how this workshop would be. But one of the things we wanted to discuss with you tonight is, um, if, this is probably, we're anticipating going to be like a two-hour workshop, and, um, we would expect that you would come to this meeting ha- having reviewed the policies and be ready for discussion. I think we can probably do the policies and the land use map, the first two items here in, in the same workshop, but we're going to have to have this in July, so that we can have the document formulated and, and given to you by the August eighteenth Planning Commission. So we're on a critical path right here. So we're going to have to be looking at a special workshop in July with you that's going to be two hours. And one of the things we wanted to discuss with you is if we, if you would prefer to have this as a lunch meeting or a dinner meeting, so we can discuss that when I'm done with my presentation. So then, I think in early August, we would give you the full document, the full draft, comprehensive plan, and then, um, we would have another workshop on that in early August before we would have the actual public hearing on August eighteenth. That does conclude my presentation. Uh, so, any questions? And then we need to discuss what kind of, get a consensus from this.
You used the term complete street.
A complete street is, um, referred to a street that has traffic, bike lanes, and pedestrian access on it. And what we're doing is classifying, first of all, we're not saying every street should be a complete street. We're identifying that there should be critical streets or particular streets that should be complete streets. And some of them will just have maybe multi-use trails, or some of them will just have bike. So we're identifying, we're splitting that up on a tier of what a complete street is, and not that every single one that's identified as a complete street will have all of these components. So, but that's what the, that's a new buzz term, planning buzz term.
Karen, I understand, and I guess you're working with RTC, because RTC is working on a whole complete streets. They've had a whole committee and are having meetings on that. Are we going to put that in with Sparks, some of their comments? They're actually working on that.
Yes, I think Jim's been working, that's actually, um, Jim Rundle's portion that he's writing.
Yeah, I want to make sure.
But he's been working with them, and then, the other thing is, um, what we want to do is identify what, what streets we want to be complete streets. And that's one thing that you will have to look at and analyze too. We'll have to be take, also, is, um, showing you these maps, because we've got a whole list of maps. Beside the land use map, we're going to have this complete street map, we'll have a trail map. Um, we're also going to have a, a slope map, a water resource map that'll be part of the do- document. So, um, and then so a few other, eh, civics map.
Judging what you presented here tonight, you've got a horrible workload in a short period of time to do.
Yes.
So as far as I'm concerned, anything that the rest of the board members decide in afternoon or evening, anything we can help speed this along, I'm free and available, so I can come at any time.
Thank you.
So you're, you're anticipating like a week before we get the reports to review it and then come to the study session?
Yes, to the workshop. We would li- we would ask that you be prepared, and we have reviewed them and give your thoughts to that, so that we could.
So my inputs to that would be at least prior to the weekend, you know, for the forthcoming meeting, study sessions. At least we have a document by the weekend, so we.
Well, we wouldn't have a study session for a workshop, and it's not going to be part of the regular.
I understand, but I'm.
Because like the July seventh Planning Commission, we have four or five items already on the agenda? Four items on that Planning Commission, and just, we're not, we're going to separate that, because we want to be in the training room, because that's more of an informal setting, and it also gives us the tables that we can lay things out and work, and, and it makes it a more comfortable environment.
So Karen, in July, we're going to have that two-hour workshop, whether it be in the afternoon or.
Whatever you guys would prefer.
Okay, and then after we go through, uh, reviewing the, the land use map in the workshop, and then we'll come back the following month and review it.
Review the entire.
The whole thing.
This is the draft document that we're working on, so you'd review the entire written document.
Would that be in a workshop also, or just a, okay?
That's what I'm thinking, yeah. We would do another workshop before we go to the public hearing.
Okay.
Which is August.
Yeah, and we'd have to do that in early August or either like July. But.
Before it goes regional?
Well, no, then you're going to have your public hearing. We're going to do the second, to give us a little time, we're going to have to do the second meeting in August. And we've already met with regional planning, and we're going to be giving them the draft document, actually, before you guys even review it, because otherwise, the critical path, we can't get, we can't get on that August, I mean, September fourteenth meeting, which we have to be in September. Uh, regional planning only meets every other month, as you know. And so we have to target, and they said they might be able, they may not have it on the fourteenth. They actually have a second date reserved in September. So it'd either be one of those dates, but in order to meet those dates, we are going to have to give them the draft document about the same time you guys are just starting to look at the draft document, in order for us to make that.
We have to see it, then we have a public.
Then we have to have a public hearing, yes.
And our recommendations will be to the city, uh, council?
Actually, by state law, you guys approve it.
Well, we approve it.
The city council ratifies it, or certifies it, I think, is what the NRS says, right?
That's right.
Certifies.
Believe it or not, the primary purpose of the Planning Commission is to control the, the master plan and the, and we're calling the comprehensive plan.
So that's why it's really.
Your primary charge.
Yes, sir.
Just, uh, one, one comment, um, I think, I think somebody scheduled, you know, our, our intent is to bring you the document for your consideration on August first, oh, I'm sorry, on August eighteenth.
You know, it's, it's up to the Planning Commission ultimately as to whether or not you're prepared to, to, to approve it on that date. Uh, our, our goal, our intent is to bring it to you on the eighteenth. You know, the Planning Commission has, is, obviously has the latitude to decide whether they're ready to, uh, you know, approve a document on that date or not. You know, I think Karen referred to the, to the original planning date that we're targeting. She's referred to the city council date in October that we'd like to conclude the process by. But our job really is, as your staff, is to bring you that document in August, uh, and then the process will, will, will play out how it plays out. You know, I mean, if you're, you're not required, um, to, to adopt or approve that, that document on, on August eighteenth. So just.
The point I was trying to make was understanding that any meeting that was forthcoming in a subsequent week, if I could get the documents prior to that meeting week, so I can look at them over the weekend. That's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, we're going to, we're, we're going to both documents, the, the policies, and we won't give you the land use map. But, um, we can look at that in the, in the workshop. But the policy document, we would get that to you, a minimum of a week before the scheduled meeting. That way you would have that entire week plus through the weekend before. Because usually we give you packets on a Friday, but we would anticipate giving it to you like maybe Monday or Tuesday of that week. And then also with the whole comprehensive document, we want to give you a full, at least a week on that document too.
Might be a good idea too to email that little missus to, to some of us, so we can keep those dates in.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can do, I can do that. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Do we want to set a time, whether we want to meet for the workshop in the afternoon or night?
And do you have a preference on the day? Merrill Lee's handing out a copy of my PowerPoint to you.
Oh, okay. We're talking, kind of definitely sometime in July, right?
Preferably fairly early, so maybe if we have planning commission on the 7th, maybe we would do it, I don't know if you want to stay with the Thursday, we could do it the following Thursday, or...
That would be the 14th.
We have a planning commission meeting on the 7th, you say?
Yes.
Right.
And we have four items on that agenda, and we don't want to combine it.
So the 14th would be the next?
Yeah.
No, that, well, that would be a regular planning commission date.
No, it would be the 7th.
You're right, I'm sorry. Twenty-first.
Fourteenth would be the...
Twenty-first.
So do you want to do it?
The 14th.
You want to do it the 14th?
Where's the 14th crowd you go? You won't?
That'll give us a deadline we've got to make.
And you figure a two-hour session?
Mm-hmm. And would you prefer it at lunchtime or dinnertime?
Well, I'm more, I'm like Mr. Martini, I'm more sharp in the afternoon than I am at night. I'd like to do it in the afternoon, too.
When you say afternoon, are you saying dinner or lunch?
Lunch.
Okay.
Because when you get my age, bedtime's about 4:30. So I'd like, I'd like to be...
That's fine, we could do it over the lunch. Does that work for you, Diane?
It works.
Okay.
On the 14th? So let's set it for noon on the 14th?
Yeah.
What's the idea, by the 9th or 10th, we'll see some documents?
Yes.
Thank you. For the weekend.
That's, that's good. Here's our lunch.
Any other comments, questions? Point being that we're on a critical path.
Why, could you tell me why that date is set for that date? Why does council want that date? Anyone have an idea?
The city manager. Do you want to address that, John?
Thank you. Chairman Camerota, members of the commission, John Martini, community services director. As you all well know, development's coming back. So the city manager, as well as the city council, has made the comprehensive plan part of our strategic plan. We need, we need this plan to shape the future of Sparks. There are Armando and I, and Karen, and Ian, Mr. Thornley, we're meeting with developers every day. There are requests to expand outside our current boundaries. We need a document to set forth policies for how the future of Sparks is going to look. So, yes, it's critical, but I think Assistant Director Ornella summed it up well, and Doug confirmed, this is your purview. Whatever we bring to you, this is, this is your decision to make, the council will ratify it. If there are issues that need resolution, after what you see what staff has prepared, you have the right to say, go back and look at this again. But this document, in my 17 years here, I don't know that I've seen a document for us to use that's going to be more critical than what you guys will be considering and putting your efforts and actions into here very shortly. And I hope she's still standing.
At the end of this.
To be honest with you.
Yeah, I just see a lot of, lot of information. Thank you. That's, I just wanted to know, so the reason is, is to get things early, so for development, we've got a set plan?
Without giving a lot away...
It makes good sense.
We're meeting with developers, and as a staff currently, we can't answer some of the questions, because we really need this document to work off of. And until we have it, we can't provide folks who are looking to invest a lot of money and shape the future of the city with the guidelines that you've approved, that Regional has looked at, and then the city council ratifies.
Okay. No, that's great. Now I'm much more on board.
And it's big picture. I mean, this isn't just land use, this is where we're going to distribute sewer capacity, roadway capacity, how we're going to handle runoff and flood issues, like Karen was saying, which one's going to be a complete street? Because as you well know, Commissioner Spurber, we need the right-of-way if we're going to do it, and that's expensive. So this document will really be the instrument staff uses to bring future projects to you.
In the long run, it makes everybody's job easier, planning commission, staffs, and everybody's job a lot easier to have some kind of master plan.
I agree, Commissioner Peterson, as Armando and I have had discussions with, if this document's done right, everything we'll bring to you, we will be telling you how this meets master plan policy.
So, excuse me, governing NRS would be somewhere in 237?
278.
278, is our, yeah.
Thank you.
Is the motherhood document.
That's the mothership, yeah.
Yeah.
That's our, what did I say, 278?
It's not 278, is it, Doug?
Yes.
A? Is it 278A or just 278?
Just 278.
It's 278.
Chapter 278.
Okay, thank you.
And there's a section on master plans, if you look in there. I don't remember the number, but...
Thank you.
It outlines what we have to have.
Gives you the whole thing.
You'll, I was going to say, you've read it too many times.
Chairman Camerota, you'll find it under the section entitled Planning Commissions, I believe.
Thank you.
Make sure you're looking at planning commissions for counties between 700,000 and 100,000.
I was just going to say the size. Thank you.
That's great. No, that's all I really wanted. I see a reason now, you know, I didn't want to just push something just to meet some arbitrary date. See, it makes sense for us.
It truly is a strategic and critical need for the planning commission, for the city, and particularly for staff, to, like I said, to bring things forward to you in the future.
Also, with the absentees, I guess we need to urge folks, so we need, we need a forum of these sessions.
They're not a study session, you're not going to be making any action. But, I mean, it's critical that you guys are, this is your document.
Right, so...
So it's important that you play.
Right. If it does, if it is the 18th for you, the document, that will be the critical day.
That would require, because that's a master plan, that would require the...
That's my point.
Yeah, on the 18th, we will have to have the...
A supermajority.
Supermajority.
On that one.
To adopt it, right?
I think Doug's looking right now. Supermajority for the...
No, it is.
On the 18th, we would have to have the supermajority.
No, I'm looking for the actual site for Chairman Camerota.
Oh.
I got NRS. Already said, yeah, definitely.
Not in the workshops. Though, Armando and I were talking about before the meeting, that I think we will notify, we'll do like at least a newspaper notice or something that we're going to be doing for the public.
So it'll be open to the public?
Yeah. So, but who reads the notices?
Hopefully everybody, and there'll be a lot of public here to comment.
Yeah. The other thing that we do have to buy NRS, because we are adopting the land use map, we will, we will have to have what the NRS requires, a neighborhood meeting. So we will be having that, I anticipate probably late July. So we will be having a meeting that we have to notify everybody within the city of Sparks and 750 feet around the city of Sparks regarding...
Wow.
So we will be having this meeting.
That's a big, never forget.
I'm thinking we may have to have several venues, I don't know, we haven't worked that out yet, but we will have to have...
I guess I got to be careful with the gavel, huh? Yes.
A neighborhood meeting.
Any other questions for manager of development, Ms. Melby?
It's great. Thank you, John.
That's it?
Thank you.
My last slide says thank you. That's it.
There is an item, this time in sequence, for public comment. This is for general public comment, limited to items that do not appear on the agenda, and is limited to no more than three minutes for each commentator pursuant to NRS 241-2-020. No action may be taken upon a matter raised under this item until the matter has been specifically included on an agenda. There is no public comment. Comments from the commissioners? Back to the diners. Make a move for adjournment?
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?